Call to order. City of Dickinson, regular city commission meeting. But the records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the order of business. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the order of business?
Thank you, President Decker. There is one change. There will not be a timetable today. They were asked to have that removed, so we will not have a timetable. Other than that, everything is good.
Okay. So we have an amended agenda. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the removal of the timetable item?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amended agenda, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next item up is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda commissioners would like to discuss? I have one question on the consent agenda. Mr. Kubis, the extension on the master services agreement?
Yes.
How long of an extension is that?
It was for five years.
Was it terminating this year?
It would terminate, yeah, in January.
Twenty, 2020?
Okay.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If you know other questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into our non timetable agenda. And the very first thing up, we have an announcement to make. And that will be handled by our recycling and collections coordinator, Schumacher.
All right. Good evening. As you see, we've got kind of a full house here. We had a recycling contest that ended on October 25th, and we actually had 82 entrants. Our theme was, why should I recycle? And we chose one winner and 15 finalists. We kind of tried to recognize each age group because it was K through 8 in Dickinson. So what we'd like to do is recognize all the kids that are here. They're going to come up with their posters, and we can get a picture with you guys with the kids and their posters. And then there is a participation prize for everyone, and then there is a prize for the winner as well. So first off, our winner is Nareen Trent, who's in fifth grade. And as I call your name, if you guys want to come up here and grab your posters, and then we'll get our picture when we're done. So I'll have that for you, and then I have some prizes when we're done.
Yep.
If you want to go up there, you sure can. All right. Then we have Christian Kennitzer from kindergarten. And we have Dawson Sadowski in first grade. And some of these were able to make it, and some of them were not. And you guys, if you guys want to stay up front, we'll get-
Yeah, if everybody wants to just come up-
Yep, we'll get a picture with everyone. So go ahead and stand up front. We have Emiliana Thompson Yasi. Sidney Heidecker. And these were all first graders. We had one from second grade who couldn't be here, Itzia Caro. Third grade was Aleja Chavez. We had a bunch of fourth graders. They must have done it as a fourth grade class. So we have Savannah Mendoza. We have Ethan McMackin. We have Taylor Gerbig. We have Caitlin Savageau. We have Tate and Coontz. Tyler Prowse. Tyler may have been the ones, one of the ones who couldn't make it. Do we have Cooper Orton here? All right. And Ellison Lam. All right. You want them to move down here? Do you guys want to scoot towards the middle, and we'll kind of get you? And if we could have the mayor and the commissioners stand, so we can get you all in the picture, that would be great. Yeah. Those are awesome. Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for participating in this program. It is greatly appreciated. And then the winner, you can come back and sit here.
I think this is the best looking bunch we've had in this room.
I think so.
With the exception of a couple of guys out there. But I'm not mentioning names, Darryl.
You know what? We're going to, Carson, you want to pull on this one? Make it go up. So she, there you go. Now you won't be so low. There, you can see over the counter now. All right. Now you can see all the workings back here.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you all for participating. This is a wonderful program. And having the children reinforce the message, I guess, is sometimes the best way, reminding their parents on a daily basis to recycle. And this is, just puts kind of a little crown on the success that we are having as a city in our recycling program. So congratulations to everybody, and we will continue on, and we will move on to our item B. And that will be our, whoever wants to hang out, you can see the great workings of everything that we get to discuss on the city. We're going to talk about the fee schedule next. So-
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Kate.
Good job, everybody.
Sure you don't want to talk about how much, like inspections are going to cost you? You know, 60 gallon bins going to go up. All right, we'll be, we'll move on to item B. And that is our 2020 fee schedule. And that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. In your packet, you receive the full fee schedule, and the, if you notice that there was highlighted, any 2020 additions were in green, and then the orange were updated or edited. So on the screen, you can see the actual summary of what has been done. And the rate changes is what would be in orange. And so we have fire suppression decreased from 350 to 300. Fire plan review increased from 40 to 100. Museum birthday parties increased from 75 to 100. Solid waste commercial collection rates for all yards, one time per week through the five per week, increased a total of 7%. The actual amounts that are in there are in the actual fee schedule. Same with the solid waste commercial collection, once per month, twice per month, and on-call increased 7%. Solid waste, small business, 90 gallon, increased 7% from 1623 to 1737, two times per week, 3246 to 3474, three times per week, increased from 4869 to 5211. Additional garbage placed next to commercial container increased from $7.50 per yard to an $8 per yard. Utility billing, water usage rate, increased from $6.38 to $6.70 per thousand, and that's what the citizens will pay. The increase also came from Southwest Water Authority. By the letter that they sent to the city, they raised it by 27 cents of their rate to us for what we have to pay. In the last three years, Director Zeroff gave a report that said that we had been charging $1.15 over what we pay Southwest, and we raised it to $1.20 to help, the five cents is to help the infrastructure that we, the city has to replace. So that's where you get the $6.70. So if there's any questions on the water rate, I would probably direct it towards Director Zeroff. The next slide, please. So the rates that were going to be removed on the new fee schedule, the library, interlibrary loan, it's not been used, so that one's being removed. The solid waste commercial collection rates, remove the six times per week for all yards. We didn't use that, so we removed it. New additional rates, engineering, public infrastructure permit went to, is going to be charged $50. Construction inspection, 10% of the bid price. In solid waste, a small business nine, 90 gallon on-call is $8.69 each. So those are the additions and the removed, and then for the year 2020. So if there's any questions, I would be glad to try to answer or send it to the department head that requested that. There is a resolution in your packet that I'm asking for staff recommendation to approve the 2020 fee schedule, if there's no questions.
Mr. Steiner?
On the last line, solid waste, on the last line, solid waste, small business 90 gallon on-call, 869 each, is that just to have it there? Are we charging them for every time they call us to dump it?
I would ask Aaron Prowse if he could come up to the podium and answer that question for me.
Did you understand the question?
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, the 869 is when we put a small business account out there, which consists of a 90-gallon can, and they call in for a request to pick up. We do also have on the fee structure where they would go once per week or twice per week as well. But usually on small business, it's a 90-gallon, and it don't go but once a month, probably.
What's the on-call part of it?
They call in and request the dump.
Is it an additional one, or just?
Either or. As an additional of what they're ready paying services for.
Okay.
Or just to get the can dumped.
So it can either be deliver an extra 90 gallon?
Nope. Nope. This is on the commercial side only. And if they call in and request to have their container dumped as an extra pickup, or some of them are set up just on an on-call basis because they don't generate a lot of trash, so they may call in once a month or every couple of months, and that's rate we'll charge.
Can we go and pick up and haul it back and dump it and haul it back, 369?
We typically just work it into our route when we're there the next day. So it's usually we're picking up other commercial businesses in the area, and then we just work it in right away.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
The only, the only thing we've talked about previously is the water sewer access fees, if we wanted to take a look at those again, but... That was before my time when those rates were implemented, how we came to them, so...
Commissioners, President Decker, if I may say, if there is something that the commission would like us to look at, this does not have to be passed tonight. It can be looked at to review, if you would like us to review any other ones.
I guess my suggestion would be that we table this and make it part of our work session. We're going to, I think, next month, the work session's going to be the very first meeting of the month.
Okay.
I had requested that from Mr. Gop.
Okay.
Because I want to discuss the commissioner portfolios that evening. And my recommendation on this, so we can look it over and forward any questions to staff, is maybe we table this to, to that first meeting in December, and then also put, make this part of the work session.
Okay.
Unless-
I have no problem with that.
-commissioners have objection to that.
Is there any other fees you would like us to look at?
My question for Mr. Kubis on the engineering, the 10% of the bid, what is a typical bid? What size are the typical bids?
So it absolutely vary depending on the project. And that, that's, that's why we put it as a percentage, because if, if we'd have built out some of these big subdivisions that we would have, that we've plotted in recent years, in their entirety, the bid could have been $10 million. You know, the, the cost of construction. So that's what we're referring to when we say 10% of the bid, is 10% of the, the cost of construction of that public development, our public infrastructure that's being installed by a private developer. 10% is just kind of the industry standard, so.
So if it was $10 million, it would be a million dollar price?
Yes.
$10 million of the entire project?
Would be a million.
It'd be 10% of the public, the water, the utility.
This is, this is no cost to the public. This is no cost to the city. This is what a developer should anticipate, paying the city for us to inspect the project for them. Because when we went through Chapter 34, we reorganized that to make it very clear that the developer would be able to install their own work, hire their own contractor, but that the city would be doing the inspection. And this is the fee that would cover that city-led inspection.
We would lead it. From my understanding, we would lead it, but it would more than likely be hired out.
Certainly. And this would go to pay, pay that cost to outsource the inspection. It's a, really a generally accepted number in the industry, the 10%.
I think-
That's something, again, that's what we need to have further discussion about.
And I think in the past, the developer would have paid for the inspection privately anyway.
Correct.
Whoever their engineering company was. We're trying to get that so that the developer is not hiring their own inspector. We want to hire the inspector.
Well, we have some time-
So, I mean, I think that was the-
Yeah. Well, we'll have some time to-
We'll discuss it at the work session.
Yeah, at the work session. We'll make sure that we can put some of these items to staff, so. Anyone else have any questions?
I just looked at this quickly, but that's the, one I mentioned is the only one that I had, so.
And that's why you can, now, if you can, you can look at it as commissioners and come up with questions for staff in the work session.
You know, and I saw we removed some fees. So we look at this every year, and if we don't use a fee for a period of time, we try to delete it off here.
Correct. And these have been on there for a good, over three years, and we just haven't used them.
Okay.
So we are taking them, our fee schedule's long enough.
Yeah. Well, I'd make a motion to table it to the work session, then, if that's everybody's wishes, so.
We have a motion to table.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing no further questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move on to the monthly financial report, and we'll have our accountant, Mr. Maury, come up and present that.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Starting off with our treasures report, I want to mention right away, this will look a little different than it has in prior months. And the reason for that, it was a few meetings ago that Deputy Administrator Carlson had spoken to you and had the demand deposit account approved. So basically, all it was, is it split our money market. A portion of that went into this new demand deposit account to help us keep our, our interest rate high with American Bank Center. So that's the only reason it looks a little different. As far as the networking cash total, we're still right about that, right about that $60 million range that we have been staying at pretty consistently. So that, that's really the, the only reason for the difference on this slide, is that new demand deposit account. And then with our investments, we are at a total of $37.2 million. Again, you know, we talked about this previously, that all of our pension contributions come out at the beginning of the year. We shouldn't see any major changes, especially through the rest of 2019. We'll get some interest coming in, and we'll have some distributions out of the pension accounts, but for the most part, these numbers will be, they'll be pretty consistent through the end of 2019. Moving on to our 1% sales tax, and like we always do, I just want to remind the public that these numbers are on a two-month lag. So the numbers that you're seeing, that we're showing for October, is actually revenue that we collected in August. So we received the money from the state on a two-month delay. So with that, through 10 months of 2019, we're, we're 8.5% higher than we were through 10 months of 2018. And then in October of 2018 to October of 2019, we're actually about 20% higher, almost $100,000 higher from, from this October where we were in October of 18. We're actually on pace to finish above $6 million for the first time since 2015. And then the 0.5% sales tax, we always just include this slide because, you know, we collect one lump sum for sales tax. In our funds, we have a 1% sales tax fund and a 0.5% sales tax fund. So this is exactly half of the previous slide that you just saw.
Mr. Maury, do we get a breakdown on what the city is collecting now from internet sales?
That's not a, a report that I have ever seen, unless Deputy Administrator Carlson has seen anything.
We have not received any kind of report. I've even called the state and asked if we could have a report on that. They tend to tell you that we don't give out that information, that it comes in as a group under a certain sales group, like automobiles or whatever. You don't get to see exactly what comes from each one of the automobiles. It's a, you know, motor.
But they have to disperse it, so they should be able to-
They get a lump. They get a lump, and then we get so much per, just like the sales tax and stuff, we get a, they get a lump, and then they disperse it as zip codes.
That's what I was going to say. It should be dispersed as zip codes, because you have to put your zip code in if you purchase anything.
Exactly. But I can't get the information yet. I don't know if it's because they don't, I actually can't tell you why, but I'm just assuming.
Good question for our legislative body.
Exactly.
And I do want to mention with this, as well, I know Commissioner Steiner had asked about seeing five-year trends, and we did include in your packet on pages four and five, you can see a five-year breakdown of where our sales tax and hospitality tax has been at for the last five years. And then moving on to our hospitality tax, we had forecasted $875,000 for 2019, and we're actually 4.5% higher through the first 10 months than we were in the first 10 months of 2018. And then just in October, you can see on that last part of the red line there, there alone, we're $25,000 higher in 2019 than we were in October of 2018, which is a 31% And then with our occupancy tax, you can see as well, in October, we had a pretty significant jump, the highest collection we've had since January of 2018. With that, we're 4.5% higher in 2019 than we were for 10 months of 2018. And we are, excuse me, we're 17.3% higher in 2019, and that last collection is actually one and a half times where it was in October of 2018. And then as well, a reminder for the public on this, is this is the total amount we collect. A half of 1% of this amount goes to our general fund. The remainder is paid directly to the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau. Our oil impact revenue, you can see in the blue line, so those beginning months, we still had a portion of our 2.5 million going to Dickinson State University. We're now, you know, caught up and back to having the full amounts come directly to us. Through 10 months of 2019, we're 6.2% higher than where we were in 2018. In October, you can see we are a little bit below in October of 2019 than October of 2018, about $72,000 lower, which is a 5.7% decrease. Even with these numbers, we're still on pace to finish higher in 2019 than what we did in 2017, or, excuse me, 2018. This slide here is a new one we just added. We wanted to start showing the commission information on utility revenues. So just for this financial report, we put our water consumption monthly breakdown on here. You can see for the most part, it's pretty consistent. We were pretty significantly higher in July and August of 2019 compared to 2018, but then we did end up going down in September of 2019 compared to the prior year. So I, I think a lot of this is largely dependent on weather, you know, and some, a few other factors that I'm sure Public Works Director Zeroff could talk about, but for the most part, we're pretty consistent with where we were in 2018.
Do we compare this report to what we buy from Southwest Water?
It's not something I have done, but it's something I think we can do.
Be just interesting to see if we're charging for what we are buying.
What are, what are loss?
If we have a loss. I don't know if there's an industry average on percent of the loss.
Excuse me, Commissioner Frederick, we do a monthly water loss.
We do?
Yep. So that's compared monthly on what's sold and then what we purchased. So we have an annual loss.
Do we start seeing that, that report?
We could add it to the financial report.
Yeah, we sure can. Sometimes it, it looks like a lot, but then I think the next month it, it comes back. But I, I can give you an annual or a monthly water loss statement. Usually, we're below standards of like 3% to 4%, sometimes it's 6% to 7% is industry standard. Lately, we've been pretty good for water loss.
Okay. Just curious.
And then, so with this, you can see, we're, like, like we mentioned, we're pretty close. In October of 2019, we're 3.4% higher, just about $12,000, than where we were in October of 2018. And then this final slide is one we always include, just our snapshot of the summary in your packet of the accounts receivable and accounts payable. And again, if you have any specific questions on a customer or vendor, please let us know. And we do also have a breakdown of the accounts receivable over 90 days in your packet as well, if you need to see any of those customers. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and city staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the financial report. Who move?
Second.
Motion to approve, a second. Any further discussion?
Do you actively work on the 91 and over? Do we make phone calls? I mean, that's 26% of our total.
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's something I know with, especially with Deputy Administrator Carlson coming along, that's, that's been a goal of ours, to get that number down. And I know we, in our, in our finance department with our accounting technician, that's something she's really been working on, is making those phone calls. And if it's something we can't collect, sending it to DCI to at least get a portion of that revenue.
Of what percentage of the 91 and over are we still allowing water to flow?
With utility accounts, if they are over, then we shut the water off. AR is anything other than utility, so it's non-utility billings. So a lot of the 91 and over could be insurance ones, could be permitting.
We have a couple of outliers that- We have a couple of outliers that I don't think we're ever going to collect.
Well, if we got a couple outliers, let's get them off the page. So we got a truer.
Absolutely.
Let's write them off.
Absolutely.
And Commissioner, we are going to be presenting to the commission in January for the end of December, a write-off list of those that can't, we've done our due diligence. And then we are working with DCI. We've contracted them, and so we have lowered that percentage of the 91 and over. If you remember from when we first started, it was up in the 30, high 30%, and we've brought that down. We have done a lot of collections with their help also.
To write off the old ones that we aren't going to collect, that's a lot better.
And I'm not sure on the timeframe specifically, but for utility billing, after a certain amount of time, it's actually special assessed to the property, the amount that they owe.
Great. Thank you.
So this large one, this 31,000, is that an insurance claim or something?
Yes. That is something that was not paid by the insurance and we were trying to collect from the private party.
And we could potentially give you a list too of what all we've actually sent to DCI, if it'd be helpful, because that, I think that might be one that was actually sent in for DCI to try to collect for us.
It's just funny, there's some local businesses on here that are still in operation that we, in our 90-plus and over, I'm not, do we have reasons why they're not paying, or we don't know, or?
They usually wait till the last minute.
Okay.
On most of them. I mean, just be nice about it, that they get that phone call and they're paying right away.
I wouldn't want my name on this list. That's why I'm wondering, especially if it goes in the paper someday. So, okay.
All right. So we have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. We'll move to item D, which is 2020 liquor licenses. Chief Dossinger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. The Dickens Police Department recently completed a reviewing, the renewal applications for the 2020 liquor license, licenses. The Dickens Police Department recommends approval of those applicants. There were a few deficiencies or concerns that the police department did have, and there will be letters attached to their licenses when they re- resend them out. So those letters will come from City Hall.
Now, are there any items that we're going to get calls about?
It's possible.
You don't want to enlighten us, or?
They ran from anything from asking them to update their map that they submit, the liquor license renewal, or to non-typical places such as Men's Dan, asking them to take a look at how they are dispensing or displaying their tabs.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Chief Dossinger?
Did we have anybody that missed their renewal?
I don't believe so. They all got them in, so.
Any other questions, comments? There are no more questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the liquor license applications for 2020.
I'd move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item up is an abatement, and this will be handled by Assessor Hirschfeld. We have the Red Roof Inn applying for an abatement.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I've been working with Ethan Horn from Ryan Inc. on this abatement. I don't see him in the audience. If there's a representative from Red Roof here who's handling this, I'd like to give them the microphone and let them tell their side of the, of the abatement here.
Is there anyone from Red Roof here? Okay, you can go ahead and proceed, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I haven't been able to contact Mr. Horn for several weeks here, but the gist of their argument was the property sold this year, 2019, for $1,400,000. And they were asking that the 2017 value be abated to that value. Their reasoning was that their 2017 income, and I provided and included that spreadsheet there before you, that their 2017 income had dropped significantly, and that's why the 2017 value should be lower. However, the 2017 value is based off of what the property looked like or what the market characteristics were as of February 1st. And of course, December 31st, then would be the end of the 17 income year. So that 2017 income doesn't necessarily pertain to the 2017 value. We'd have to look back at 2016, which was just a shade higher than what the 2015 value was. Despite that, we knew market, the market was changing and within the requirements set by the state code and guidelines, we did drop the value of that property from $6,307,000 to $5,406,000, which is, and $5,406,200, which is what the value for 2017 actually was. I don't know how long you'd like me to go on here, but my recommendation would be to deny any decrease in value for this property for the year 2017. We recognized the market was going down and we adjusted lower. We did that within the parameter set by the state. You know, we now know that the market needed to go much lower, as reflected in the 2019 valuation. But, you know, as we follow the law, we've lowered the values, you know, and responded to that. So with that, I'll throw it back over to you, Mr. President, Commissioners, and open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on this abatement?
Mr. President, Mr. Hirschfeld, I want to have a discussion here overall. In this case, the applicant's position is that the income dropped off. Okay. Under state law, when it comes to the hotel motel business, do they specifically state that we need to deduct due to income dropping off?
Mr. President, Commissioner Steiner, in the appraisal methodology for assessments, for fee work, for mortgages, there's three methods that are available to us. That's cost approach, market approach, and income approach. So the income would be one standard. Cost is what we use as the standard, but our cost model is based off of the market as well. It's how we calculate our depreciation. And so we use the one that has the most data. In 2017, we didn't have any sales of apartments, or, I'm sorry.
So we don't use 100% of the income base approach?
We don't, no.
Okay. So my next question would be, if ABC Hardware builds a new building for $2 million and his income the next year is $1 million, does he have the same right that hotel motels, whatever, can come and say, my income's down 50%, I think you need to lower it to $1 million, even though he built it for $2 million?
Mr. President, Commissioner Steiner, in that instance, a hardware store, that's business income, and a little bit to an extent, so is hotel income, but it's an income generating property, and you're looking at, you know, occupancy for the building, you know, how many days it's full, you know, what was the rev par on that, on an income generating property where the hardware store is a single tenant. And so that's based more on what the property would sell for than what the income for that owner for a single tenant would be.
So my position on this is, you know, I don't mind giving consideration to the hotel motel based on the income that's produced, but I think sometimes that industry goes overboard and wants us to look at income only. When there's a physical structure there that we also have to take into consideration. But it seems like every hotel motel that comes in and questions is here, they stand on income only. And that's where I struggle, you know. I can't make a decision just based on income. I'm going to look at the entire project. I just wanted to have this discussion.
When were some of the recent sales on hotels? I mean, we've only had a couple in the last couple of years, is that correct?
And that's it, yes. And we had two sales this year. Comfort Inn sold this year, the Red Roof Inn, and Comfort Inn sold last year with additional consideration with it. So that wasn't a good sale. And when you look at for 2019, of course, we're talking about 2017 here, but for 2019, where we ended up after the Vanguard appraisal, this property is roughly 30%, sold for 30% less, which is a concern. However, the other property sold for 30% more. So two sales isn't a real good indicator, but what it shows is that there's inconsistency in the market. And, you know, it goes back to, you know, the seller and the buyer, and, you know, how willing they are to sell on. Do they have to get rid of it? Is it a fire sale type of deal? Where they just, we need out of it, we're losing too much money, or whatever it is. You know, there's lots of consideration that goes, and two sales doesn't show the full market, in my opinion.
And in this case, they wouldn't let you in to look at the structure or to take a look around and see what kind of condition in?
And that was my request, and certainly we have a different owner now than the owner from 2017 who's doing the abating. I don't know whether the current owner wouldn't grant them, that consideration to allow me to go through, or if any effort was even made. I know I've made three or four attempts to contact the tax reps here for this property, and I haven't heard anything back. So I don't have a good answer to give you. I don't have any information at all.
Okay, thank you.
So the property sold this year for one, basically 1.4, and we have assessed at 1.8 currently, correct?
Correct, for 2019.
So we're pretty close, though.
Pretty close. And then even that value that we have for our 2019s, based off of 2018. So if the market's still continuing to decrease, that might reflect then in the 2020 value.
Correct. Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, Mr. Hirschfeld, you referenced the listing price in your memo. How much weight does that carry when looking at abatements?
Mr. President, Commissioner Trustum, it certainly goes to, you know, it really is a good reflection of what the owner thought the property was worth when he listed it, or, you know, maybe his Realtor. But beyond that, their information wasn't any better than what I had. There hadn't been a lot of sales. I'm assuming I haven't had a chance to speak with the Realtor, that, you know, they took a stab in the dark. They were looking at what sales were in Williston, or Watford maybe, or even Minot. And, you know, a property such as this, similar quality amenities, similar room count, might have been selling for that in other small towns here in western North Dakota. But, you know, they listed that, been on the market for a year, and it didn't sell for that. Sold for about half of what they started at.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hirschfeld? We do have, in your packet, there are three possible motions on this. If there are no more questions for Mr. Hirschfeld, you can correct the 27 value to reflect the value requested by the applicant, which is 1.4 million. You can make no change to the assessed value, having it remain at 5.7 million for the year of 2017, which was calculated as a fair and equitable valuation based upon North Dakota laws and guidelines. Or as a commission, you may take the option of correct the value to some other amount.
Mr. President, move or deny abatement?
We have a motion to deny the abatement. With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you.
Next item up is the proposed, or the wage scale with an amendment for 2020, and that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The wage study summary is up above, and I'm just going to make some comments, and then we can go into any discussions that you made. So I would start like, wage study has been worked up for quite a few months, and as a result, a market adjustment of specific position wages is a function of several factors, including supply and demand, cost of living, and organizational ability to pay, just to name a few. The individual position results of the market study vary. Some positions fall below the market, some right in line, and then some come, positions come in above the market. With that, you have before you a wage scale known as option D. This option is a hybrid of option C that was presented to you on October 28th, three weeks ago. So if you go to the slide, I'm going to skip down to the second bullet point, and these are exactly what changed, six items changed from C to D. So option D reemerges the fire inspector and fire lieutenant at a pay range that puts them a dollar below the police levels of the corporal. This also, when we say reemerges them, the fire department was asked to come to the table, discuss their wages, and figure out what we need to do to make it comparable to being a little lower than the police department. They did do that. We came to some conclusions and compromise of what we felt was good enough for positions in the market, and then what they offered to do. So again, in the C option, they were split. So fire inspector and fire lieutenant were put together again, and then fire, senior fire inspector and fire engineer were reemerged and put then a dollar below the sergeant level. Then the second one was the fire marshal and assistant fire chief. They were in two different categories. Being the fire marshal was paid lower than the fire chief, but with that discussion came that they are actually divisional chiefs, as they are like in captains, so they have their each area. So we merged them two together, and with that, one came down and one went up a little bit. So that was at the table. With all those of the fire department that was being done, that was a cost of $2,000. The third one, or the other two from those four, because there were six changes, the public works managers of operations manager and the solid waste managers were in M3. They were asked to be the same as utility manager, which was an M4, according to the market, and that the reasoning being that they were always together at the, in, within the scale, and they felt that this was something they wanted to look at. So with that, they all went to M4, which was a cost of $5,000. So that brings us to, it's, I just rounded the numbers, it's a little bit closer to $7,900 for the total. So with that, the administration staff are asking for approval of the amended version of the wage scale with the following parameters. This is a living, breathing document. We would like to continue on working on updating the process for classifying job descriptions. With the Neo-Gov coming in, this is where we can redo all the job descriptions so that we are fair and marketable. Develop an incentive system for new hires based on education and experience. Administrator Gah has been working on what we need to do, which is actually called skill-based pay for our, for our new employees that are coming in. Also, using that same incentive for our current employees, what do we need to do for skill base that they are bringing to our table for longevity? And then to continue to look at ways to improve the exempt scale.
Mrs. Carlson, we don't have to go down the road of skill base. We wanted to eliminate that.
What would the skill-based pay is if education or experience?
Right. But we're going to confuse a whole workforce by using that term.
Well, I agree, because skill-based pay was used in the very beginning on the old scale, which was actually a market.
But if we, we were, set this up to eliminate skill-based pay, and if you go back down the road saying, this is skill-based pay again, now we're opening up a whole nother can of worms.
Okay. With that, we would like to continue to look at ways to improve our new hires and our current employees, and then the exempt scale. So with those parameters, I am asking for the recommendation of administration to approve the amended. So I will leave it up for the discussion of the Commissioners now.
Commissioners, any questions, comments for Mrs. Carlson?
Mr. President.
Trustum.
I want to... I want to start off by thanking everyone for their time that's been invested in, in these multiple pay plans. I think that, you know, we started with the intention of making sure that we were being fair and equitable across the board, and I think we have done our best to do so. You know, in doing some analysis, um, in other communities, and looking at the market study that was provided, which I handed out to you, I noticed that there are a lot of positions that are below market, compared, using our data sheet here, and many positions that are well above, which Mrs. Carlson did discuss. I don't know how we define what's fair and equitable when we have some positions that are 89% of the market, and some that are 138% over the, or 138% of the market. Minot, I know, uses a scale where they have a variance, so they're where, they can look at every employee and say, "Based on our market study, everyone is in this range." That means that their employees don't gravitate outside of that threshold and create some of the issues that I think we've seen internally, um, with morale issues and, and comments regarding the, um, pay scales that have been presented to employees. At this point, I think, I'm trying to understand the data that's got here, gotten us here today, even using the wage study that was provided to us. We have a lot of municipalities that are missing some of these areas, and some of these are, are much larger, twice the size of Dickinson. So, is that a relevant market to be comparing Dickinson to? I'd like to hear what you all have to say, but I did take it upon myself to reach out to some consultants to see if they could review this. Why I think this may be a good idea is because we have people that don't believe this is fair, and I think that stems a lot from it being done internally, which I can see why many municipalities choose not to do that. Um, in my discussions with them, they have said that they can provide a market analysis to us before the end of the year. That would mean that we can still have a pay scale approved for 2020.
How much?
Um, I had two, two soft quotes today, and they were between 6 and 12,000. Actually, excuse me, 5 to 12,000.
You know, when I see some at 8, and I spend some at 132, and I look across the board, and I keep on, wage is twice as much, 20 times as much. I think we've done a pretty good job without facing everything that we've done, on the chair that's provided. Uh, one of the parts we had, I think we had about four or five different proposals before us, and, uh, I'm not so sure that the original we had four years ago wasn't, isn't the right one to go with, but, but.
But we're past that, and, you know, our first meeting after, after doing this wage study, we all agreed that, like you said, we thought we did a pretty good job. Uh, our number-one concern was taking care of the ones that have fallen outside the box, so to speak, and we brought those into the box. And now, we're hearing from other parts, and I'll guarantee you, we're going to hear, I don't care how many times we approve this here, or change it, we're going to hear from people that don't agree with it. And I'm not saying they're, they're wrong in not agreeing with it, but I personally think we got a pretty good handle on what our departments and positions are being paid. You know, we, we keep up on this here. It's not like, well, we got to do the wage and study this year, let's go out and get all this stuff. We get this stuff every day during the year, of what people are paying and so on. You can't go to a, another community, whatever, and talk about city government and not, "Well, what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing?" You know, so, as much as I appreciate this here, I, I can't justify spending 6,000 to 12,000 dollars on another wage study this year. Uh, at a certain point in time, I think we have to make a decision and live with it till next year's budget session.
We, we didn't spend any of the money, though, Mr. Steiner.
I'm, I'm not saying.
Yeah. The 15,000 that we did set aside, we didn't, we didn't spend any of it.
Right.
It's still sitting there, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not asking these consultants to redo a wage study, just review this one, right?
We're asking to have them, what I would propose is have them take a look at our proposed wage scale and do a market analysis to make sure. I want to be able to look at every employee and say, "We did everything we did, or we could do, to make sure that this was the best possible plan." And I'm not saying that, that administration or anyone involved didn't do that. I'm just saying that as a commissioner, I can look them in the eye and say, "We made sure we had an outside counsel review it, and they reassured us that what was proposed was the best plan." I think we've had a lot of personalities that have been very loud through this, and have stuck up for themselves, and said what they believed was fair, and, and they should do that. I understand that, but we, we have, we also have many positions here that, that haven't done the same, and, um, and you can see that they fall behind. And I'm not saying that that's the case for everyone, I'm just saying that I would rather have, rather be more confident in the plan that we approved.
President Decker, would you take input?
Sure, Chief.
President Decker and Commissioners, I know that you're struggling with this, and I know that Commissioner Steiner can relate to the past experience I have. Whether you have an outside, third-party consultant come in or not, the same hue and cry that was raised by certain members of certain departments will happen again, because a third-party consultant coming in, whether they're going to redo the plan or just comment on this one, are going to recognize positions that may have artificially been kept low based on input from others, and the hue and cry from that group again is going to cause you to throw good money out the window, because you'll not accept what they've done. I've experienced that in the past, that's the experience I'm drawing from. I wanted to state that, Commissioner Steiner, I think you remember those times, but the other thing, and I, I just need to ask you, I personally, in my department, have new hires. I have firefighters that, through the benefits fair, made certain decisions based on what they were told at that time to expect for next year's pay raises. The window of opportunity for them to come in and withdraw some of those decisions is not going to be next month. So, I, I really need to know what to tell those employees, because in a couple of cases, if they're not going to see what we already told them they were going to receive, it's going to be an undue hardship on them, and they need to get into HR, and they need to make changes again. Please keep in mind that impact to some of our employees. Some people have made decisions based on what they were told to expect that may be decisions they need to draw back from. I know I have at least two. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just comment, I do, Mr. President, I do agree with Sarah, to get an outside look. I mean, it's just consultation, kind of give us outside view, pull back any of our biases or anything. I do agree with that.
Any other comments, questions?
This is, oh, sorry. This is the first time I'm seeing this sheet, so, but, I mean, here's some of the concerns I, I brought up at the last work session, that we have positions that are outside of, you know, we keep hearing it's market, 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 but then, you know, I've seen since the beginning that some of these positions aren't market, you know, with the information we've been provided, and I've had concerns since day one on that, on that part. And now, when you see it in black and white, I mean, you have some positions that are 38% higher than the five cities that we have listed here as, you know, as, as our comparables. And are these the best cities? I don't know. I mean, I still think, you know, a look at everyone in North Dakota might have been a better one. That's who we're going to compete with. Probably not going to compete with Casper for a police officer, or quote enforcement person, or clerk of court, or.
Ms. Carlson, didn't you come from there?
Yes, I did come from Casper, and I just want to, um, reiterate to the Commissioners to, Minot's listed on there, but I use Minot's, um, year, annual wage study, which they include four counties and all of eastern, um, North Dakota, all their Fargo, the ones I did not put on there, Fargo. Then they also go to two other states, which is also, um, Aberdeen, they use Aberdeen, they use South Dakota, and they use, um, other cities and states, but Minot, I listed as Minot. But I do want you to know that they have their own field that they go out to annually to get their market studies.
I downloaded Minot's. Their core comparators they use are Bismarck, Burley County, Dickinson, Fargo, Grand Forks, Mandan, State of North Dakota, Starr County, Ward County, Williams County. In additional, they get wage studies from the Bismarck International Airport, Dickinson Theater Roosevelt Regional Airport, Hector International Airport, in Fargo, Grand Forks International Airport, and then the Appleton International Airport, which I'm not sure where that one's at. Wisconsin, maybe?
Mr. Decker, if I may comment, please.
Chief Osgard.
I guess I'd like to address Mr. Frederick's comment about comparing Cass County or, or Fargo. Um, in a sense, yes, we are competing with salaries for those. As you know, basically, Dickinson Police Department, we have an excellent staff. Recently, we did lose an officer to the Fargo area. He, he did come back to us, obviously, but we are still competing. We do not want to continually become a training ground where we spend, invest three years into an officer. Uh, they become very valuable to, to the western North Dakota, to eastern North Dakota as far as being marketable to be hired. We have to make sure that we retain those people, because, yes, we are competing with Fargo, we are competing with Bismarcks, we are competing with any sizable agency in the state of North Dakota. And the biggest challenge that we have right now here is starting salary of Starr County Sheriff's Department, starting salary of Dunn County Sheriff's Department. Obviously, Dunn County's much smaller, they're able to afford to pay their people much more than what we can as a city, but $10,000 more starting is a huge gap, especially when they allow their people to live within city limits. They're no longer requiring them to live in Manning or Kildare. They're allowing them to live in our city limits, so they, so they, they appreciate the confidence of what we offer as a community in Dickinson, but yet, they're making 10,000 to 12,000 dollars more, starting with no experience. So, yes, we are competing with those other places. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, and, and I did run the numbers, and we're going to be the second-best police department in the state with the new plan, which is great for recruitment and retention. And we jumped from seven, um, is what it looks like with our previous plan with the skill-based pay. So, I mean, we're definitely, definitely will be competitive with those numbers. But again, I think we need to, in my opinion, make sure that everyone can be looked at in the face and said that we did receive outside analysis that shows that this plan is fair and equitable, and understanding that that's not going to make everyone happy. We're never going to make everyone happy, but we can do our due diligence to make sure that all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Well, to get this.
Is there going to be a set of ground rules if they come in with their due diligence and say, "This one needs to be increased," and we say, "You're right"? What about the ones that you say are high? Are we going to?
I mean, are we going to, are we going to live with it, and they come in? You, you see on here which ones are at 130%. If they come in and say, "You need a tolerance of 110," that wipes out a whole department. I can tell you that right now.
I think we have the best staff here with our department heads, Deputy Administrator Carlson, and what the Commissioner has seen so far, and years and years of working this wage scale, I don't think an outside, I mean, they can show us numbers, but I don't think they can get down to the bottom numbers that we have done, or what Mrs. Carlson has done. And, uh, you know, we're, uh, coming up on December, next August, or July, or whenever it is, you got to start looking at the next pay and wage scale. We need to make a decision and move on, and, uh.
And I know there are concerns, and, and, and Mr. Steiner can tell you this, that whoever's sitting here in six months, because of the election in June, they can take a whole different.
Absolutely.
They can go completely across the board like Bismarck did. Bismarck went almost a whole new commission down there and eliminated positions. They, they start cost-cutting, so it doesn't.
That could happen here.
It could. So, I feel comfortable, and I've stated this before, with the plan, I understand the concerns from other Commissioners of wanting somebody to look at it, but if we have somebody look at it, and they come back and say, "Oh, this position's 132%, it needs to be 110%," I guarantee you that person walks the mile.
How is that fair to all the other employees? That's where I'm getting at. I'm not, I know we have great staff and a great team, and I'm not here to be the bad guy, but I also want to make sure we're being fair. And I'm not saying the, the scale isn't fair, I'm saying that when we still have all the issues that we have internally with it, and people feel like it's a biased scale, I think we need to have that outside perspective, is to give us the direction we need to make sure that it's where it needs to be.
You know, the other way to look is when you have a job opening, and if you get a lot of applications, you know you're probably in the right area. If you have job openings, you don't get a lot of applications. We have adjusted those salaries and so on, based on, we, we just did it a month or so ago. We, we changed, I don't know what position it was, but, uh, we weren't getting any applications, we were too low, we increased them. I don't know if we got any more applications today, it might have been that department or whatever, but we have adjusted these here, as we, we've been looking at that, as we, every year, every time we had an opening or something, and we haven't received applications, what are we doing wrong? Well, it's because we can't compete. Well, then, we need to change it. I don't know how many changes we have done over the year, but we are addressing them.
Mr. President, Commissioners, if I could maybe add a little bit here to this. Um, you know, this, um, idea that you've brought, Mrs., Commissioner Trustum, you know, may be a great thing to look at, um, next year, while maybe implement this, um, plan for now, and look at it for next year, but I will tell you that, um, one size doesn't fit all, so when you look at one job description in one city, it may not be exactly what this job description is here at the city of Dickinson. Maybe we're doing a little bit different here, maybe the pay should be a little bit different than what it is there. So, it's a lot to look at in a very short period of time, and, you know, you, you heard what Chief Seabock had to say about, you know, some of our employees have made decisions based on this. You know, my suggestion was, would be, why not move forward with this pay plan, continue to look at it. Minot looks at theirs every year. There's nothing that says that we can't continue to look at ours and improve upon it. If we see that something is not right, not perfect, it's not going to be, let's continue to work on it. We have NeoGov, which is going to provide us a lot more information that we will just have at our fingertips every year, and continue to prove, improve upon it. But I just, I really don't know, I mean, I know that they've committed to, or said that they can get something like this done, is it going to be fair and equitable like you think it's going to be in a very short period of time? Is my concern.
So, Mrs. Domenech, how does that affect an employee who, let's say, we approve this today, and we have a review of it, and it brings back that we have various people that are well and above where they should be? How does that affect them?
Once the cat's out of the bag, how do you put it back in?
You adjust it. Minot, Minot does it every year.
But that's my, I don't, I, that's, I can't imagine doing that to an employee after they've, they've been under the impression that this is where the scale's going to be, and this is what they're going to receive.
I would just like to give a personal experience with that. We had, when I started in with Casper, and we, I'd already been through.
in with Casper, and I'd already been through two studies. I wasn't part of the first study because it was done two months right after I had started. But on the second one, I was the one that brought in input. And with the study that came in, it was the Fox Lawson one at that time. So, that was back in 2008. The one of the things that it was is my title then was business service supervisor. When the third party came in and looked at all the job descriptions, what you were doing, mine was, there was no business service supervisor out there in the market. Mine was compared to a finance director. Okay, on that one, I got a jump on that. When Gerzak came in in '12 and redid the wage scale again and looked at the market, my finance, my job description was finance director. I was the assistant to the administrative assistant. That was, again, not a job that was out there. Because of that and what my duties were, I froze for three years. And that's exactly what this one does, too. If you've been brought in at a higher scale, or you've been brought in at a different market of what the job is and what it entails, because they look at the essential duties of what that job description is, and as Ms. Nomenek said, we will have that at our fingertips because we will be able to go through our job descriptions. They have not been updated for so long. We will be able to do all that. But there's going to be other ones that may flip-flop from what we're looking at now, where they will be, if we pass this, they may come in and we go to an outside, they may be froze until the scale catches up to them again.
The only difference with this scale compared to a Fox Lawson, like our old scale, is we have, no, we had steps every year, or every other year. This, if you phrase somebody's salary, there's a possibility they could not get a raise for 10 years if they're outside the scale. You understand that, right?
Right. And also...
Where in the old scale, that's not possible.
The old scale, we did not give steps on some years.
I understand that. But you're not going to be outside the scale for... If you start at the beginning salary in year one, and you're outside the scale in the five-year, you're not getting a raise for nine years. You're froze.
You'll get a cost of living.
Other than a cost of living.
Right.
Where in the Fox Lawson, you pretty much were guaranteed a step at least every other year.
And the scale goes with our 1% every other year.
I mean, that was 12 or 13 steps, where this is four.
Right. And I truly believe, but that, I truly also believe that the exempt was put way back in the Fox Lawson. And with the Fox Lawson for the hourly, there was a decision made that you could go all the way up to three and hire them in.
Mr. Steiner.
I think we need to move this off-center. I'd make a motion if you would.
Okay. Well, any other further discussion, questions?
The only comment I'll make is, I have advocated for this for the longest time. I understand the concerns. I understand there's positions outside tolerances both ends of the scale. But if you put in parameters of 5% on each end, that shrinks that even smaller. What I would be completely open to is, if we do approve this, bringing in an outside source, doing an RFP, giving them time to look at it in that fashion. I think if we try to find somebody to come in right now, we're going to get an exaggerated cost to have it done quickly. And it's not going to be as thorough as it should be if we would give them the appropriate amount of time, rather than, you've got to have this done in a month. So...
I would go one step. I think we should approve this here with recommendations. I don't think we need a study out there because we've got eight to 10 months of our own inside study that can be done from now until next June or August. That time, with any changes that have been made, if we see problems, then you might want to say, "Let's bring someone in where they aren't rushed in 30 days to give us a study." At that point in time, you say, "You know what? Something hasn't changed. It doesn't look good. Let's get that study done." Now, you have someone that you can hire that can do a good job without rushing it. But I think tonight, we need to get this going.
And Mr. Gahn and I have had discussions about what Ms. Carlson alluded to of bringing a incentive pay to employees that continue with their education or bring years of knowledge to the... We would cap it, though, and it would only be for the non-exempt, the hourly workers. If they presented different levels of education, say, a two-year, four-year, or master's degree, it came with X amount of work experience to us, we give an offer up to, in this incentive pay, the initial talks was an additional dollar an hour for that additional, depending on the level of education, be it associates, or a four-year or a master. Now, that's open for discussion. That's not something that's set in stone. That's just something that we've talked about. So...
Can I make a motion, and then we'll get into any discussion after that, and then after that, we can call for the question.
Okay. Mr. Steiner would like to make a motion.
I'd move we approve the 2020 wage study that's been shown here with the additional bullet points up there that Deputy Administrator Ms. Carlson recommended.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the 2020 with the amendments, which would be the wage scale. What are we dubbing this?
Option D.
Option D. We have a motion, and I think Mrs. Wanko... I roll my Rolodex in my brain. Excuse me. If I am correct, I can second the motion.
Correct.
So, I will second Mr. Steiner's motion. Any further discussion or correction?
President Decker?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to, you know, we talked about bringing people in at market value, and then the timeframe that they would be frozen. I guess I want to maybe look at one specific position in public works, where we brought in this person because it was a system that was never done in Glendale before. It was a high-tech, not in Glendale, in Dickinson before. It was a high-tech facility. We had to pay higher market to bring this person in. And we couldn't promote internally because there wasn't the knowledge or experience there. So, we brought this person in, 30 years' experience, very knowledgeable in this technology. And I believe at that time, it was market value of that person, the value of that person. With this new wage scale, that person is frozen for six years. And he's frozen for six years, and we don't get annually cost of living, Carson. There's not annually cost of living built into this.
I said there was a cost of living on the Fox Lawson.
Okay. In this scale, there's a 1%, maybe every two years. So, I really feel, and I know right at this point, that that person in that position is looking elsewhere. And so that's going to be difficult in my department. So, we have some positions that are frozen for six years, and then some positions that get a 25% increase on the exempt end, and that's the difficulty I have. So, thank you for letting me say that. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion or questions? There are no further discussion or questions. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
No.
Mrs. Trustum?
No.
Mrs. Walla?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion does not carry. I'm looking for other motions on the 2020 wage scale.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum.
I would move that the commission seeks outside counsel to review the pay scale and provide data and an analysis to move forward.
What are the timeframes, Mrs. Trustum?
Well, Mrs. Wanko, due to it being under $15,000, we don't technically have to put it out for bid. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I did speak to three different consultants in Dickinson. I think we can absolutely entertain any others, if you're aware. Maybe we have two members of the commission work with or interview some consultants and have the authority to hire that consultant to perform the work. The two that I did speak to that said that they would be available, said they could have it before the end of the year so that we can make a decision prior to 2020.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to suspend the approval of the 2020 wage scale and have an independent source review it.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Mr. President, I need to have the answer to how we are going to handle the 89% person versus the 125% person. If you're going to bump up the 89% person based on a recommendation from an outside source, boy, we better be knocking off the top end based on outside sources.
That's right.
Or at that time, are we going to say, "Well, we just ignore that part. We just need to get these guys up"? That's not what a comparison does or an outside study does.
So, Ms...
If you want the bottom part, you better get ready for the top part. Everybody that chose the 125 or the 100 or over, you better be concerned.
Mr. Steiner, I understand where you're coming from, and that's why, you know, many municipalities have that variance, so that they know that each position is well within that market, over and under 10%, over and under 20%. We can define what that looks like, but I think at some point, we have to have something that we can put teeth into.
If it comes at 89%, you have a position 89%. And they say it needs to be at 100. Are you going to say, "That's right"?
Well...
I want... No, I need to know, because the next question is, if someone's at 120, and they say, "Well, it needs to be down to 100." I want to know now if you're going to say, "That's right," because we need to have that discussion.
And so, maybe we need to have a workshop that we can dig into this a little more.
We have a workshop here. We have eight to 10 months to do this workshop.
We have 42 changes from option A. Forty-two.
I understand that.
And many of them are due to, due to the employee, or the department head, or the commissioners bringing light to it. But we have many others that haven't been talked about that are below. And I think we need to have some fairness in this and make sure that everyone is looked at in, from a completely outside view. I just think we need to take a step back. I don't know why we have... I understand Chief Seabock's comments, and I don't want to be the bad guy in this, but I want to make sure that what we pass is the right thing. And I don't, I'm not sold on that right now. And I'm not sold on freezing people for eight years because we passed a wage scale that wasn't what it should have been.
Well, I won't serve on that committee because I don't want to be a part of that show. No.
Okay. We have a motion to table the 2020, seek outside independent evaluation, with a second. Any further discussion or comments? There are none.
President Decker, just to make sure that motion, I think there was a timeframe.
Within the next...
Make sure that that's identified properly in the motion, because I think that's part of Ms. Trustum's...
That means we might have to have a special meeting at the end of December if this... So, what are we looking for a timeframe? They got till what point of December?
I think, again, I think we should maybe schedule a work session where we can talk about that, talk with the consultants, and figure that out from there. I don't know that we necessarily have to establish a day. We said by the end of December. I think we have some, I think we can work within that range.
So, by December 31st?
Sure.
Okay. You still good with your second, Ms. Walla, with that timeframe?
I guess I would have a question. How does that affect admin with pay? Because obviously, they're going to do payroll for January based on those. Right? Exactly. Your first paycheck in January, which would be the 17th, but we have to establish all the taxes and everything at the beginning of the year. And due to this, I will not be able to put out a budget book or assess where my budget or finances will be for the new year until everything's passed. So, there won't be any new budget books out. I can't put out what our expenses will be for general fund or anything until we come up with something.
So, in this example here, you're showing assistant library director at 89%. Is that a concern, Ms. Trustum, that one? Percent of the average, would you say that's a concern?
Commissioner Steiner, the concern is that we have people below and way above.
I know. But would that be one that's a concern?
I think it's not about identifying positions. It's making sure that the entire scale is where it should be.
Would the 89% would be a concern? Let's leave the position out of it.
I think any of them that are... We haven't established a variance in what we think it should be within, but as you can see, many of them are below, are well above 100% of market.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You've got one 89%, and then right below that, you have...
If you look, there are municipalities that are missing.
Mr. Steiner speaking right now.
You have almost 14 right below that that are above 100%. We better be careful. In fact... Oh, smoke. There's got to be 80, 90% above 100% on here. High, high 80, close to 90%.
Commissioner Steiner.
So, if we have one that's concerned, let's address the one in the budget coming up. We can approve this here and address it. Any of them that we have a concern with.
Again, these are, not all of them are filled in. Some are from, we have a town from Wyoming. We have municipalities that are twice our size. I mean, I'm just, I want to make sure that it's a fair market analysis. That's what I'm getting at. I mean, if this is the data we're using to establish our pay scale, then I just want to make sure that it's where it needs to be.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We don't have to ask for the consultant to give us a recommendation. You can just have them do a market analysis for, and then we can decide. Is that correct?
That's correct. And they also discussed livability factors, which looks at the economy as well, rent prices and things like that, so that it's not just about the job. It's about where you live as well.
So, to the independent analysis will just be a recommendation?
It might not even be a recommendation. I could, we haven't defined the criteria yet, but my opinion would be just a market analysis of, and we define what market we want them to analyze. That would be my recommendation, but we don't have to take a recommendation from a consultant.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Trustum. Do you, with the amended timeframe, Ms. Walla, do you still, are you still the second?
I am going to...
You are?
No. I'm going to change that, just because I know it's going to be hassle for admin and employees. That's a lot to throw at them at the end. But I do think we should continue to evaluate this. I think we should do an analysis and rehash it again for next year because, obviously, there's so many discrepancies between the levels. And I think hearing you guys and how you try to compete with the market, but still, you have to stay in your budget, and some of those that are 140% over, how did that get to that? So, I think if we do the analysis and set the parameters... So I think if we do the analysis and set the parameters as to where we do swing, if you guys do need to get into being competitive and want to offer more, but there has to be a cap on that.
So you are rescinding your second?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm looking for a...
Excuse me, President. Counselor? Based on what I just heard, can I bring up my motion again?
Well, I'm going to see if there's a second still out there on this motion.
Okay, all right, very good.
Is there a second on this motion?
Do we have to have a timeframe on it?
I just set the 31st because it was the end of the year. After talking with them, they said it could be done before that. Obviously, I don't want results on December 31st so we can call a special meeting on New Year's Eve and make a decision. I simply just stated that because it was the last day of 2019. But I understand the concerns surrounding that.
When's our last meeting in December?
September 19th, I believe. 17. 17.
Is that timeframe more feasible?
So a month from now.
We have the 3rd and the 17th are our next meetings.
So if we can have the pay study a week prior to the 17th meeting, have a work session and on the agenda that night, is that more realistic or possible or okay with everyone? That gives them about 20 days or about 10 days done.
We had budgeted $15,000 for this year, for the pay study.
Right. So we have it in the budget.
So we have a motion, and are you amending your motion for the timeframe, Mrs. Trustam?
Yes.
To the 17th? Is that what I'm hearing? The 17th of December?
Yes.
So we have an amended motion to have this independent study done by the 17th of December?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing no, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
No.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes no. So the motion carries three to two. This committee will be comprised of yourself, Mrs. Trustam, and...
I'll...
Ms. Walla. That will be comprised, and they will seek this independent view.
Mr. President, I would just like to ask that we would have the authority to hire without having Commission approval, just so that we can get this started.
As long as it's within their legal, our legal previous, it's under $15,000.
Yes, I think, yes, I think that's fine. It's under the budget. You've already allocated the expense for it, and as long as the Commission is approving that, I think that's fine as well.
As long as it remains under what is budgeted.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Hiring Journal. Mrs. Nomenek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. First on the list, we have police officer openings. Currently had two offers that we unfortunately had to rescind, so we have the position back open for two more positions. Interviews are set for December. We had an internal opening for Corporal Police Officer, and that was filled with Senior Police Officer Jaden Peters. Communication Specialist is becoming a very difficult position for us to fill, and we've recently made one offer. We have someone in the background right now. Operations Manager is still open until December 2nd. Collections Road Operator, we recently made one hire externally. We opened it internally, and we had one person internally to apply and get that position. And then the Bookmobile School Service Librarian position, we had open. We did not receive any applicants that met the minimum qualifications for that, so we will have to reopen. That's all we have at this time. Any questions on that?
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the Hiring Journal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other reports this evening. Our timetable has been removed. Item 10, Public Issues of City Concern, not on the agenda. If you have a issue of concern within the city that it was not on our agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern. Anyone from the public with any concerns not on the agenda? Anyone? We'll close the Public Issues of City Concern, not on the agenda, and we'll move on to 11. Commission, do you have any items you wish to discuss that was not listed on the agenda? Hearing no concerns from Commissioners, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
We are adjourned.